Fam.
Fam, we gotta get up early this morning.
We did.
We went out and about, we hit the streets, combo couch style, or some people like to say combo couch stizzy.
Fam, nobody says that.
I don't know, out there, do you guys say combo couch stizzy?
No, they don't fam.
Well, the combo couch stizzy is that of like political commentators, journalists that actually get off the couch that they commentate on and they get into the streets and they do what they gotta do.
I laughed out loud when Gloria Jones said, you know, for your name being combo couch, you guys are barely ever on the couch. More than most of indie media. And I was like, you know what Gloria, you're right. Thought that was hilarious that you said that, but it's true.
Johnny still has the best idea. I think we gotta do it. He wanna get a flatbed truck, put a combo couch on the flatbed truck and go out into the streets and do the show as we're doing it on the streets.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So the couch can be taken to the streets.
Yeah, like I said, but not some broomsticks, the flying bed, the flying couch. Same, same idea fam.
So how did you feel about what went on this morning?
Uh, I was angry fam. I was angry. You know why I was angry? Because a lot of these people that are attacking us now um, were supportive of some of these city council people when they ran for higher offices even. And when they ran for city council, I'm talking about Kevin DeLeone. Kevin DeLeone is somebody we've called out on this show from day fucking one. And guess what? Who could have told you that the progressive Kevin DeLeone, who was supported by the large majority of progressives in LA, guess what? He would turn his back on the people. He voted yes for this uh ordinance.
Yep.
1840.
Is it 1841, I believe, or? Yeah.
1841.
It's an ordinance which it's making the homeless people take down their tents. They can't no longer object. Uh, you know, on the, on the, yes, 418. They can't, they can't uh block sidewalks, bike paths. Johnny actually read the ordinance while we were in the streets marching and I'm walking backwards. Then we were shutting down a street, well, we, the protesters were, and we were in the middle of the street.
Doing interviews.
Of doing interviews and in the middle of LA, that's why the sun was hitting me, guys. I was asking why my tan looks so beautiful and whatnot. Just showing it real quick. Um, but yeah, we were actually doing interviews in the middle of the street and what's going on. But that's what this bill, this bill, this ordinance is. And I just wanna point something out though fam.
Yes fam.
Um, remember I did give Kevin DeLeone a chance when he won the nomination?
You did.
I did listen to the progressives. I said, okay, I'm gonna give him a chance. Let's see what he's about. That was short-lived. I mean, a couple of weeks later, I was like, ah, no.
I know, you weren't, you weren't, I remember we had that whole argument. Do you remember?
Shilling for Neil liberals.
We had it on camera.
Yes.
Where he was actually, okay, let's see what he does. And I was like, no, fuck that guy. And I remember this very, very well, actually. I think we did it over there. I think we were on the, the desk. And we were having this argument. And so it's funny to me how far you've come, how far I've come, but like how, how we're just done with all of these politicians, because guess what, guys? The same thing always happens now. We've been from, you know, 2016 to now, the same thing always happens. And if you're not changing uh, your mentality along with what's happening, then what, what are you doing? I still see some of these same people advocating the same type of reformist bullshit that is actually keeping us from having actual change. That is the truth. That, that is the reality. Johnny, you have something on the screen. Okay, here are the votes.
Yay. Bloomingfield, yay. Bonin, no. Pascaino, yay. Sidello, yay. DeLeone, yay. Harris Dawson, yay. Corretts, yay. Krikorian, yay. Lee, yay. Martinez, yay. Mitch O'Farrell fam, yay.
Of course.
Price, yay. Ramen, nay. Nithya Ramen, yes. And then Mark Ridley Thomas, yay. And Mr. Rodriguez, was that Ms. Rodriguez? I don't know which one it is. Yay. Fifteen yays, uh, thirteen yays, two nos. That means it will pass unless the mayor of LA vetoes it. Hold your breath, don't hold my beer.
Mr. Joe Biden is a little lackey on his way to India.
India.
Yeah.
Sending that asshole to India.
Fuck Garcetti, fuck Garcetti.
Why would they send him to India? Like, why would he be the?
Cause he ass kisses and plays ball pasta.
They just give anybody jobs for anything. It's like they fucking don't even care. Here Garcetti, you, I mean, you be the ambassador to India. Why?
Have you seen what he's done to LA? Come on.
Does he even know about the BJP on the RSS? Does he even know about Narendra Modi? Does he even know what's going on? Oh my God, instead they sent his stupid ass there. Just done. Uh, the liberal city of Los Angeles made being unhoused illegal fam. The city council has made their position clear. They want unhoused people to be exterminated. This is an act of war, in my opinion. They're making it illegal for an entire group of people to exist in this city. That's the shawl. And, and let's be honest, right here, they're gearing up for what? The Olympics that are coming.
Yep.
They're gearing up for the Super Bowl that's coming.
Yep.
So for tourism and everything like that, it's out of sight, out of mind. Just get these people up, let's move. And you're not even presenting a good solution to how you fix this problem.
And here's where I go with that, right? They're not presenting solutions to this pandemic of, of like, this, this like crisis of homelessness. Like that's, that's the real, like, because people are dying every day on the street. Some of the speakers were talking about it. People are dying because they can't get their insulin, because they can't get treated for normal things that they shouldn't be dying of because they have unhealthy eating habits, because it's the cheapest food, it's fast food, and it's still not even that cheap anymore, by the way. And like, they're dying because of things that they shouldn't be dying of, right? Yet you have all of these idiots advocating, oh, we care about you, please get vaccinated. In the middle of us covering this, we got a, a, an alert.
Yes.
Covid is on the rise. Like everybody got this alert and it's like, please make sure to get vaccinated. And a lot of these people are realizing it. In fact, months ago, when Johnny and I went to cover Echo Park, we, when we spoke to a lot of the unhoused people, they were telling us like, covid, we don't give a crap about covid. We're over here trying to survive. We're over here trying to like eat and like, you know, trying to make this community work. So all of these liberals talking about covid this and that and masks this and that, they don't care about you. They don't care about your health. What makes you think that they, that there's a reason why they want you to get this, this thing, this thing, this vaccine? They're like, what? They don't care about you. What? If they did, why didn't you, they give you healthcare for all?
Yep.
They're not gonna give you that. They don't care. So it, it doesn't take a genius to make the connection. If you're a working class person, you're wondering, why are they pushing this so hard? But look at all these problems we have right here in front of us.
They don't even attempt to.
They're not even talking about that. Why is that? You have to ask why.
Yeah. And that's what our boy Leo Phoenix talked about right now. They really care about your health, the jab this, the jab that, the boop boop, whatever. I shouldn't, but yeah, really, they don't give you anything you need, especially when it comes to mental illness. You need healthcare for mental illness, right? We have so many people who are mentally ill that end up on the street because they don't get the care and love that they need. And he also presented solutions, Phoenix, our boy, who was speaking today. Go back and check out the video. When he was talking about, what about all these empty malls and these empty schools that are abandoned? Can't we just take them and let us do our own thing? Don't you take the money anymore. You politicians have taken all this money and you've come up with bupkis, nothing. We're back to where we started from. You have no solution. Give us the money and let us present the solution. Let us walk on our own two feet. You say we can't do anything? You say we're a bunch of bums? Let us prove you wrong. And when we did do it in Echo Park, you shut us fucking down.
That's the thing. When they try to help themselves, the government shuts them down. So let, just real quick, I wanna mention, they did away with a lot of the bathrooms and, and sanitation areas that were there for the homeless.
Yep.
They did away with that. Garcetti cut the, the funding of the program.
That was in Little Tokyo.
Before, three months before, the, it was the date of expiration. He cut it three months before, saying, well, we need to relocate them to better uh, areas and we, and these aren't even used when they were actually the most used. Another thing they're doing is, and I think this is the beginning of, of what's gonna happen to us all, they're trying to put these people from their tents. They're trying to get rid of their tents and say, oh, we're gonna put them into housing. But what they mean by housing is saying, are things like project room key. Project Room Key is um, a sort of project where they go into hotels and motels, basically, where they uh, get a room, but guess what? They don't get a key. They have strict curfews. They cannot be late at all. They cannot talk or socialize with other people. They even took out the ice machines from these areas. And of course, they're gonna say covid this and covid that. Um, and so they, a lot of people feel like they have no freedom, because as human beings, our freedom is important to us, our freedom to go and come as we please. And so they, they don't have any freedom over their own life. So they feel like they're in a jail or a concentration camp, is their words that they have used. And they don't wanna live like that. So they're not for that. They're also not for any sort of shelter that prevents them from living freely. And of course, then people are like, well, what are you gonna do with the people who are on, you know, drugs and who have issues? It's like, well, this is why we need healthcare, a national type of healthcare system where people can go and get treatment. We heard a story about a woman whose brother uh, died over fentanyl. Pasta has talked about fentanyl with Shonda from uh, Roar Media. They have been talking about this for months now. What, the opioid crisis. All of these things are coming to a tipping point. This is why I say everything is connected, because everything is fucking connected. Everything from the housing crisis to Medicare for all, to the opioid crisis, to the fact that we're being censored, to the fact that the majority of the media there that stayed the whole time was independent media. And we were one of the last ones, we were like the last ones to leave and we were there.
They didn't come marching with us fam.
CNN, MSNBC, all those people, national stories, they should be, this is a national issue. This is like California is the worst out of all of these. We, we're the fifth largest economy. We have the most homeless in the entire country. And yet, where's the mainstream media covering these stories about what they're doing to these people?
Yep.
This is why it's so important and this is why I fucking dared mention Julian Assange's name when I, when I was talking about Medicare for all in front of CNN, because there's a media blackout of the working class issues. They don't talk about that.
Yeah, yep. Uh, and there's three times the housing available than there are homeless people in LA. Just, just keep that in mind, ladies and gentlemen. Three times the housing available for how many homeless there are in LA. So just think about that.
These city council people are in the pockets of the real estate developers. It's as simple as that. LA runs on real estate, a lot of it. This is, this is why it's so expensive to live here. And these people will, from either they're foreigners or they're out of state, they'll come in, they'll buy property, they won't even live here. And the house hits empty 90% of the time. And that, that, that shouldn't be allowed. Like if, if that, if you're buying luxury property and you're not building enough, uh, you know, low income housing, that's a problem. That shouldn't be allowed. And of course, of course, it's all about the image, right? Like you said, the Olympics, the Super Bowl, all this crap.
Yep. Uh, before we uh, roll this little video that Johnny's got prepared for us, I'm gonna get Johnny's opinions on this whole situation. He's been in the streets with this whole thing. He was down in Echo Park with a lot of these people we saw in Echo Park, we're here today. Um, uh, I just wanna remind everybody that this is the only section we're doing today on YouTube. The next two sections we're doing today, we're doing on Rockfin only.
Yeah, we can.
So please, jump into Rockfin, R-O-K-F-I-N. If you haven't signed up, we're almost near 22,000 followers and it's been our saving grace. And I can't thank you enough for those of you who've made the switch from YouTube to Rockfin. Uh, if you're still on YouTube, we get it. We love you still there too as well. We appreciate you following us. But it's definitely extra love today on Rockfin, because they are the ones who really do take care of us right now and they don't suppress our words and what we try to get out there. Johnny, what you got?
What's going on? Let's get some life in this motherfucker today, man. You know, they uh, they named this event the perfect event, a press conference, cause we about to press our foot in these politicians asses today. Greatest way people give up their power is by thinking they don't have any to begin with. A lot of us are told to accept the reality. Well, just shut up, accept what you're given, be grateful. And that's complete bullshit. Let's call this what it is. It's carceral fucking housing. It's criminalization. You're throwing people in jail and yet you're not coming up with any goddamn solutions. Oh, you're lazy. You're a bum. You don't want it. Motherfucker, what? Did we not just have a program in Echo Park where people were working, were cleaning up their trash? Did we not have a community that had a community kitchen? That was trading and bartering and cleaning? Oh, but the media cameras didn't wanna show that. All of a sudden, the technology is, is, is uh, not working all of a sudden. You can't judge somebody's performance if you haven't even let them get on stage. Where's the solutions at? I hear a lot of these politicians running their fucking mouths off, so-called progressives. Motherfucker, where's the progression? Homelessness is skyrocketing. You got time to enforce lockdowns? You got time to give us a fucking vaccine and say, oh, we care about your safety? Um, if that's the case, where the fucks our healthcare at? Why don't you give a motherfuckers medicine? How many people are dying on these streets because they can't afford insulin? The fuck we talking about? Safety? How, how many, we got what, hundreds of thousands of people on the streets? Yeah, that's safe. But they got time to give us that jab, don't they? They throwing out more jabs than Mike fucking Tyson, ain't they? But all of a sudden, they care about our safety. Right, okay. What it comes down to really, it is about actions versus fucking talking. These guys get on the media and they run their fucking mouths off and there's no solution. We got solutions right in front of us. And, and for those that wanna say we're lazy, for those that wanna say we don't want it, for those that wanna say we're not doing anything, we wouldn't be here today. We got the solutions right in front of us. How about, I don't know, you open up all these vacant schools? You open up all these vacant houses? These malls? How many abandoned parks we got just sitting there? The seventh richest economy in the world, we got the number one homelessness rate. Let me repeat that one more time. Seventh richest economy in the world, number one homelessness rate. You really have to try to be that fucking mediocre. You really have to try to fucking fail that bad. Opening up a vacant school, vacant houses will cost you about half to maybe one fourth of what you're doing now. You have money to rent out the LA Grand. You have money to rent out these hotels. You have money to pay privatized security. You have money to fucking pay these cops. Oh, we get housed, but it's, it's carceral housing. They up here searching your shit like your goddamn vein that just came out of Arkham Asylum. We need to check this, check that. But it's for your safety. Lots of us came out and admitted that they don't, they do not have a permanent path to fucking housing. What this really encompasses, this is more than just the homeless versus the rich or the, or the, you know, the haves versus the have-nots. This is a battle, let's call it what it is, the people versus the fucking establishment. The establishment is not doing what the fuck they supposed to do. They have the money, they have the resources, but they wanna point the finger and tell you, well, what you need to do is, when it all said and done, the action's gonna have to come from us, the fucking people. So if Garcetti, if Mitch O'Farrell, if, if that clown we got in office right now, if AOC, if these motherfuckers don't wanna step up, give us the funding and get the fuck out the way. Let us handle this shit. We already was doing the community shit in Echo. We are, there's a lot of communities that are trading and bartering and we, and we, like I said, we broke as a joke. So imagine we get your, y'all guys' funding. We would tear your asses up and they know it. They know it. You know, they try to say you're, you're dirty, you're, you're filthy, you're, you're, you know, you're making a scene. Okay, here's an idea. Hand them a vest and have the homeless clean up their area. Give them a little bit of cash at the end of the day. Now shit stays clean. They have an incentive to work. And like I said, they can have a little bit of money in their pocket, but oh, I'm sorry, this is Los Angeles. That would require sense. That will require humanity. We don't give a fuck about that. We gotta make that fiat currency. Making sense, please. I'm gonna leave off with this. This shit is gonna hit all of us. Understand everything that they do to, to the homeless, to the unhoused, we are just the guinea pigs that's gonna trickle its way up. Let's take it back to last summer when they were searching through people's tents illegally, without warrants. Don't we got cops walking around now searching people's houses without warrants? Hmm, okay. Don't we have an eviction moratorium coming up in September? Oh. What's gonna be the narrative now? Oh, those people are lazy? Those people are bums? You know how many people I know that are working 40 hours a week and still have to go sleep in a truck? But they're lazy, right? Right, okay. This is why I say, at the end of the day, we gotta drop the bullshit labels, because labels are good for products, not people. They want you focused on black versus white. They want you focused on Republican versus Democrat. And all of that don't mean shit. It's all made up shit to divide and conquer, because the more time we spend arguing amongst that, that's less time we taking action. At the end of the day, it's gonna be about the people versus the establishment. It's gonna be about us getting land, building our own housing, learning how to grow food, learning how to do for ourselves. So that way, we can no longer be a hamster till they will. That's what it comes down to. What's, what's so ironic? These dumb motherfuckers that are in charge. And what they don't realize, if you piss off all your hamsters, who the hell's gonna run on your wheel? Nah, see, that arrogance, that, 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 oh, we, we been doing shit for you. We been getting away with shit for years. We gonna do whatever the fuck we want. Surprise. Who's gonna run your Target's and your Walmarts if they can't even fucking afford to live in the city? Who's gonna run your wheels then? What if, this is a crazy idea, what if a bunch of people get together and do a strike? They decide, you know what, we're not gonna come to work, we're not gonna come to school today. What you motherfuckers gonna do then? Arrogance is a motherfucker. It'll blind your intelligence, it'll blind your uh, critical thinking. And this is what we have with people like Garcetti and Mitch O'Farrell and a politician is gonna be a politician. I'll leave off with this. What we're living now in modern day America is basically similar to, I don't know if you guys remember the movie A Bug's Life? Disney and Pixar. I know people are giggling, what is this nigga talking about? Stay with me. Stay with me. We are the ants and the establishment is the grasshoppers. We're doing all the fucking work, but yet they're getting all the rewards. That's all this shit is when it's all said and done. At the end of the day, now if you pay attention to that movie, it showed the same scene at the beginning of the movie and at the end of the movie. It was the ants gathering food. But the difference is it showed two realities. In the first scene, it showed them working for the ants. But by the end of that movie, all that work was what? They were working for themselves. And that's what all this shit comes down to. It's gonna come down to a tale of two realities. We either keep being a hamster on the wheel or we be a bird in flight. We start working for ourselves and we say enough of this bullshit. So to Eric Garcetti, Mitch O'Farrell, all you motherfuckers, put up or shut up. We done with the liberal bullshit. We're tired of the political correctness. Put up or shut up. You say you care about our fucking safety, show it. And that's what it's gonna come down to. And if you can't do it, give us the funds and we'll happily do it. I'm Phoenix with U-Tac. Thank you, guys.
Phoenix, Phoenix on fire.
Phoenix is, is wonderful. He hit every point. I mean, it was every, every point. I mean, that was an amazing speech and just talking about, you know, how the healthcare and how we don't have healthcare and they're giving people this jab and how um, these politicians, they don't care about you. You know, he understands that. He understands the, that, the labels part, the part about, let's drop these labels. You know, so many issues that, that um, the March for Medicare for All had was that there was people in there that wanted to have these labels for everybody. Oh, that guy, you shouldn't have him on because he's a libertarian. Oh, this guy, you shouldn't have him on because he didn't take the vaccine or that girl. Those people will get in the way of actual progress. We have to have a working class movement. If you want a working class revolution, he's saying, what happened, what happens if people know their power? And start a strike. This is how you start a strike. You start combining issues. You start, you know, I was talking to him later and I was like, hey, these uh, March for Medicare for All people wanna do more events. They wanna go to politicians' houses. And he's like, yeah. Like, we need to do that. That's what we have to do. And people will criticize you for saying things like that, for saying we wanna make politicians uncomfortable, something we've been saying for years on this show now, you know? And, and Jimmy Dore says it and now they're like, oh my God, is that a threat? Is he threat? Who cares about Nancy Pelosi? Somebody wrote a Facebook post today, I was laughing. We're so glad Nancy Pelosi is safe because she's been doing such a great job for the people. It's just people clutching their pearls still about January 6th when people are out here dying. Those people need to get out of the way.
Remember J6 fam, remember J6. Johnny, anything about this? I'm gonna read some Super A's. Trey Wright says, I'll watch you guys later. Love you all.
We love you Trey.
We love you Trey. Reeve Barker, interrupting my listening to Jimmy with Rogan. Perfectly timed. Thank you Reeve Barker. Jackie Pagow. Thank you for the Super A contribution. Hey fam, watch some of your coverage of the LA protest. Criminalizing poverty is never the answer. They give it a super ray contribution. Hey fam, watch some of your coverage of the LA protest. Criminalizing poverty is never the answer.
Nope.
Thanks for being on the ground for this. And that's from Jackie Pagow. Embold fate, embold fate. A big help to Californians and US homeless, in my opinion, would be a jobs program. Growing and making hemp concentrate to develop homes for the homeless. I, I, I view this great salute as a great solution. But I'm sure Neo libs will find a way to crap on it. Hey, listen, there's taking like hemp and all the plastic from the ocean and using that for like, you know, blocks and stuff. There's so many ways we can do so many things, but they don't want you to do it. We talk about that on uh, our show to hell and back, because there's a reason why all the people who uh, suppressed marijuana from the get-go, they didn't want it around. And a lot of the reasons they didn't want it around is it's multi-use for other things like cloth, toilet paper, whatnot. Can you imagine if we wiped our ass with hemp fam and didn't cut down all these trees? We'd have so much more oxygen to breathe, because it wouldn't be deforesting the whole fucking planet. Betty Massimo. Thank you for the super ray contribution. It is always appreciated on the couch. I think my coffee just kicked in. And Kerry Mark gave us thumbs ups across the board.
Thank you Kerry Mark.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, even Stephen Wolbrand, who's on the YouTube. And Zaden, get your asses over to Rockfin, R-O-K-F-I-N. Now is the time fam.
You don't have to sign up if you don't want to. You can just click on the video link and it'll put you right there. Cause they changed that now. Uh, I also saw Vausch for Vendetta on uh, Rockfin. And he says he wants me to be his Peruvian princess. So we know who that is.
We're supposed to see him next year.
Vausch for Vendetta.
Vausch for Vendetta. Johnny, anything else? All right, we are going to cut the umbilical cord.
Bye YouTube.
Bye YouTube. Peace. Avoid the chicken grease.
Bye Facebook.
Bye Facebook.
Bye Twitter, right?
Bye, bye tweeter.
Yeah, 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 let's leave it on.
All right, let's hang in here on tweeter.
Yeah.
Remember when I did a segment, it was called who tweets to this?
Who tweets to this?
Who's tweeted it to this?